Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Wednesday, February 17th, regular meeting work session. Call it to order. First item on the agenda is accept or modify the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I will move that we accept the agenda as presented to us.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Next is a consent agenda. Do you have a motion or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we accept the consent agenda as presented. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Action agenda. Approval of food service management contract renewal. Ms. Shepherd, please.
On June 18th, 2019, the Warren County School Board entered into an agreement with Sodexo America LLC to manage the food service operations of the school division. The agreement contains a clause that allows the contract to be renewed annually for four additional one-year periods upon the mutual consent of both parties. The recommendation is to renew the food service management contract with Sodexo for an additional one-year period beginning July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. If approved, this will be the second renewal for this contract. The contract, the cost increase for the 2021-22 school year is 0% for general support services and 0% for the management fee. The general support services fee is the greater of $135,030 or 16 cents per pattern meal and a meal equivalent served. And the management fee is equal to the greater of $110,999 or 13 cents for each pattern meal or meal equivalent served. The management fee will not be paid unless the program generates a minimum guaranteed financial return of $72,750. The agreement includes the following offerings: $72,750 guaranteed return, $6,000 in annual scholarships, $6,500 backpack donation to the Backpack Food Program, $2,500 grant to introduce new programs in Warren County, $1,000 contribution to the Warren County Educational Endowment. Sodexo will continue to promote healthy eating for students and staff and create menus compliant with the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act. They will serve fresh fruits and vegetables daily and purchase locally grown ingredients when available. Sodexo will continue to employ the food service employees and train employees on proper food handling, customer service, and safety. Be happy to answer any questions.
Can you briefly discuss how Sodexo has managed this past year with our lockdowns and partial bags and feeding the students? I know we've talked about it before, but I would just...
Absolutely. So, our food service program has, since March the 13th, have delivered meals and provided meals to our families in Warren County. I have the number here. We have provided a little over 800,000 meals to date to our families in Warren County. So what we do on Wednesdays is we deliver meals to 20 locations and we, through our buses or through a van, or we allow parents to come to each of our schools to pick up meals. And then we have an evening delivery, or evening pickup as well at Warren County Middle School and Skyline High School that operates that parents can pick up meals whenever needed. So, our food service has done a phenomenal job over the past year in making sure that the students and the children in Warren County are being fed.
I just want to mention, I'm a third again, that, you know, despite the fact that not all children are in school, that, you know, they are being fed with various methods. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
I just want to add to what Ms. Bowers is saying. When I took my walk this morning, part of my route takes me around LFK, and the Sodexo folks were out there in their heavy jackets with their food carts. And when I checked my temperature, it was 23 degrees, and they were out there waiting on parents to pull up and pick up food. And you just can't say enough about the service they provide.
They've done an amazing job over the last almost year.
Yes. Anything else from Ms. Shepherd? Do we have a motion?
I move approval be given to contract with Sodexo America LLC as our food management service, services company for the period of July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022. And the superintendent be authorized to sign the Sodexo food service management agreement and accept any administrative or non-material changes as required by the Virginia Department of Education. Second.
We have a second through Dr. Pence. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Ms. Shepherd, one more time, approval of custodial service management contract renewal.
Thank you. On June 3rd, 2020, the Warren County School Board entered into an agreement with Sodexo Operations LLC to manage the custodial operations of the school division. The agreement contains a clause that allows the contract to be renewed annually for four one additional year periods upon the mutual consent of both parties. The recommendation is to renew the custodial management contract with Sodexo for an additional one-year period beginning July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. If approved, this will be the first renewal for this contract. The initial agreement for the 2020-2021 school year included a 12-month contract in the amount not to exceed $2,051,725. The proposal for the 2021-2022 school year includes a 1.5% increase in the amount of $30,776 for a total contracted price not to exceed $2,082,501. The escalation in the original contract was originally negotiated at 3%. However, we have negotiated a 1.5% increase, and one of the reasons for the 1.5% cost increase is to be competitive with other local businesses so that we can hire quality custodial service people. So, be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions approved. I mean, they seem to have done a tremendous job. I haven't been in the schools very much, but what I've seen, they really look good.
Our custodial company, just like our food service company, has been phenomenal during these, this last year. They're doing a fantastic job. They're sanitizing the schools regularly, and we really appreciate their service to our school division.
I move approval be given for the superintendent to sign the amendment to the service agreement with Sodexo Operations LLC to extend custodial services from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022 in the amount of $2,082,501 contingent upon the adoption of the fiscal year 2022 budget.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. Education Consortium, Mr. Fox.
The Education Consortium is a collaborative effort among Falkir, Frederick, Shenandoah, Warren, Rappahannock, and the City of Winchester Public Schools and the Lord Fairfax Community College to create local access to professional development and training for all school system personnel. Teachers from participating school systems can choose from 40 free-to-them summer seminars in Middletown and Warrington. These sessions are pre-approved by area schools for recertification points. They offer a diversity of topics for various subject areas and all grade levels. They're nationally known, as well as several local education experts, including teachers from Warren County. Classes vary in length from four to eight hours. The 2020-2021 consortium topics and focus areas include math, reading and writing, school climate, school culture, creating and building positive relationships, student motivation, and trauma and social and emotional learning. And just a few of the local speakers for 2021 include Jerry Brooks and Gina Dignan. We have been in the consortium since 2009. We were one of the original members. And with the exception of last year, which due to the pandemic, our enrollment went down, our enrollment has gone up every year. I'm here tonight to ask that approval for payment to the Lord Fairfax Community College Consortium for 2021 be given.
Do most of our teachers use this in order to get their certification points?
Many do, yes. It's a wonderful alternative to taking college classes. And with the new system in place, a person that came every summer could get all the points that they would need.
Were they virtual last year because of the pandemic?
Yes, yes.
Will be against you.
Well, I don't know. Some will, some will, but we're still planning on some in-person things to happen.
I would say, because I know that Lord Fairfax has a lot of classes in the evening that are, you know, on-site in person, so hopefully.
I can find out more about that. I think it's going to be some in-person. But also some virtual as well. They're living our life as well.
Anything else from Mr. Fox? Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that approval payment for the Lord Fairfax Community College Educational Consortium for 2020 through 2021.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Thank you.
Next is E. Wilson Morrison Intercom Replacement. Mr. Grant.
I'll take my mask off so you can hear me.
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
E. Wilson Morrison is in need of a replacement of the existing intercom system. The equipment and services will be provided by Syntax Communication on the Town of Front Oil IT contract. The cost of this project is $29,800, and the funding of the project will be provided by the 2021 Virginia Security Equipment Grant, and will require a 25% match. Just to let you know, this is only piece of the grant that we received. We did receive over $190,000, and then the rest of the grant money will go towards transportation for two-way radios and cameras. Any questions?
I have one.
Sure.
How old do you think the system is at E. Wilson Morrison right now? 10 years old, 20 years old?
Oh, 50. Let's see, when was it built? 30? Yeah, it's, it's, it's old. It's year-old copper wire, and yeah, it's really, really old, yeah. So we've, for the past few years, we've been band-aiding it, you know, and it's seen its last leg, so this...
I'll do it again while I...
Yeah, yeah. The nice thing about the new system is it'll tie in to our regular system, which will include bell systems as well, so it'll give them their bells that can be scheduled. And then if, you know, we need to make a call from central office to them, like an all-call, say in an emergency, we can use that as well. So we have, it just gives us a lot of flexibility. It runs all through our network, so we, we can, yeah, it's a powerful system.
Yes. I'd actually well need it.
Yes.
Good, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Grant? Or a motion?
Coming from Southern West Virginia, can we sell the copper wire?
Or how about the old system to a museum?
It's an antique.
Straight to the smith's mouth.
So also included in this is outdoor speakers. I know a lot of the, the school systems are requesting outdoor speakers so they can, you know, in case of emergency, bring people back in or out of the building, or if somebody's on the playground, those kinds of things.
Some of our schools have that.
Some of them do, some of them don't.
I think that here's Skyline Middle School's speaker to be accurate.
Yeah, Skyline has that, yeah, yeah.
I have one question. You mentioned the all-call system. Do they, are they currently not on that now?
They are within the school and then within the phone system, but not through the intercom.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this is what...
So if we were to call them, it would just come through the speakers on their phones, and we can do that, but this will go through the phones and the speakers. It'll be louder.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I move that approval be given to purchase goods and services related to the installation of the E. Wilson Morrison intercom system in the amount not to exceed $29,800.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Grant.
Thank you.
Update to the Warren County Public Schools 2020-2021 reopening plan. Dr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, I would like to recognize that this is Board Appreciation Month, and some of our schools have provided you with some things that are from them specifically are E. Wilson Morrison, Ressie Jeffries, AS Rhodes, Leslie Fox Kaiser, Skyline Middle School, and then Blue Ridge Tech Center from the carpentry.
Yes.
So, they wanted to show their appreciation for the job that you're doing. So I wanted to say that before I jump into the reopening plan.
Okay. We all thank you.
And, you know, right now, there's not just a push at the state level, but also a push at the national level for schools. We know how important it is for our students to be in school. And we know that going into this year, it was going to be a challenging year. And at the beginning, when we developed our plan, we tried to develop our plan to where we could always review that plan because we knew that that one day, hopefully, we would be able to increase days, because we know how important it is for our students to be in class. And so, from the, from the start, our elementary, they've kind of been guiding us, working four days a week and, you know, going out of their way to make sure that all students are able to get into the buildings, that one in-person, and, you know, we saw the direct benefit of that on our benchmarks, when, on the first quarter benchmarks, when you look at the elementary versus our secondary. We know that also this is affecting students, that it could have lasting effects, not just short-term, but lifetime effects. Because just in a few short days, March 13th, it will be, for some students, a full year that they have actually stepped foot in a building. Also, with our current schedule at the high school, because of the weather-related events, for the last month, almost four to six weeks, and also due to holidays, our eight-day students on Monday have not been in school. So you take in the holidays, you take in the weather days that we had to do virtual, so now, you know, their one day is, has been diminished. So, as we look at everything and, and see what we can do, we have been successful as far as with, not just at the elementary, but also at the secondary level as well. And as we work towards, you know, getting our vaccinations, and I want to thank Valley Health and Rick Farrell with the county, the Lord Fairfax Health Department, that have really helped us with our teachers in getting their vaccinations. The job that they have done and the setup that they had over there was just, it was, it was amazing. I mean, it was well organized, and they did a great job. So, but that was a piece to help us to make a move, or to be able to make a move, to make sure that we're protecting everybody. So, right now, we know that students need to be in class. We want them in class. So how can we make that happen? We also know right now that the current guidance from the CDC is that, you know, the recommendation is six-foot when feasible. If it's feasible, then yes, otherwise, don't go under three feet. But we also know that there's new guidance from the CDC as well. And don't want to, you know, I'll let Ms. Shepherd talk about that in a minute in a little more detail. But when we go into looking at what do we have to do, we know that, you know, and at the early February, or, yeah, we moved AS Rhodes to an eight o'clock start. That left us with one elementary school that we would need to move from a nine o'clock to an eight o'clock to free up our transportation. So there are a lot of moving parts that we have to adjust to increase our days. Now, when we look at this, we're not the only school that's looking at increasing days to, for further students, pre-K through 12. You have many schools that are moving to four, some are already back to five, some are staggering. You know, just in our area, Clark County is also looking at moving to four days. And so, schools, schools are going to be moving in that direction because it's what's best for students. And that's what our goal is. We, we always have to remind ourselves, the reason that we're here, the reason that I have my job is because of the students. The reason that you are the Board of Education is because of the students and the people that we serve within our community. And so, we have to do what is right for our students. And right now, our students are struggling, we know that, and we want to offer, offer some support to them. So, as we look at this new guidance, there, there are a few changes, but we feel that we can, we can meet those changes. But also, as positivity rates go down, that's going to shift us from one section to another section. And so, Ms. Shepherd, if you don't mind coming up to talk a little bit about the new guidance and some of our numbers, if you don't mind at this point in time.
While I'm getting this ready, if Mike Hirsch wants to go ahead and talk about our current mitigation strategies, and then I've got a PowerPoint to put up. So it'll take me just a second.
I can do that, Ms. Shepherd. The school division's taken the virus and the strategies that mitigate the spread of the virus since March very, very seriously. Parents, teachers, staff, and other community partners have all worked very hard to minimize the effects of COVID-19. Warren County Public Schools follows the recommendations of the CDC and the Health Department. So what are the mitigation strategies that we're using? I'll talk about a couple of the strategies, or a few of the strategies, that are kind of behind the scenes first. A division-level COVID-19 task force, a team, has been put together last March to look at COVID-19, look at strategies, and look at the, the impact it has on schools. There are a variety of community partners, including all of the agencies that Dr. Ballinger mentioned, as well as some others. Well, we're stepping it up. What we're doing now is we've implemented and activated school-based teams. So there is a COVID-19 mitigation team at each school that's going to look at related measures taken in each building. What are they doing in each building, and how's that impacting students? Those school-based teams will then report to or communicate with, share information with the division-level teams, so we can have that global view to make some further improvements. Secondly, behind the scenes, there's continuous communication with the Lord Fairfax Health Department on a daily, a daily level. The epidemiologist, our department, the school division, working with Dr. Green, communicates every day. Health and absenteeism is monitored every day. Data is sent to the Health Department every day. Our clinics and our care rooms are continuously stocked and updated with PPE, or the protective equipment. We're consistently looking at new and improved equipment that's coming out on the market, and new stuff that we can purchase to keep our staff and our students safe. Social emotional learning opportunities are available at every building, and a whole new initiative has been started with those social emotional learning opportunities, with our social emotional learning coach, to focus on the mental health of some of those students that are struggling. That's all happening behind the scenes. So what's happening with mitigation strategies that are more tangible? Well, first of all, we send a message to our students and parents, and they have been doing a wonderful job of just staying home when they're sick. Stay home. You're sick. That mitigation strategy alone has done more good than all of the others combined. People are aware, myself included. I would never take a day off when I was sick. I didn't, you know, I'm coming in. But not now. When you're sick, you stay home. Wash your hands. Wash your hands a lot. Use hand sanitizer a lot. This is being stressed at all the grade levels. And for the younger grade levels and for students that are developmentally delayed, those strategies are being taught. So not only are we having things posted all over the schools that talk about hand hygiene, as well as respiratory etiquette, as well as covering your, your sneeze, using, using your arm or using a tissue, and then washing your hands. All those are stressed with, with posters all around the school. And again, with those younger folks and students that need to be taught those strategies, that's being done. Face coverings are worn when you're in school, at all times, and on the bus, at all times. When visitors come in and they're very limited, they wear face coverings. And if for any reason, a six-foot distance can't be maintained, what we're looking at doing, or if there's more than one student seated on the bus, we're looking at an additional strategy. We're looking at wearing, we've purchased some portable face shields to go over the face covering, over the mask, so we can further insulate our students and protect our students and staff and keep them safe. So, and, and that's it forever, if there's a reason where we can't keep that six-foot distance. We're confident we can. But just in case, if something happens where a six-foot distance can't be maintained, we do have face shields to be worn in addition. So, and I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, but a mitigation strategy on the bus is one child per seat. And if they're siblings, they can, of course, be more. Physical distancing is a very important strategy, and as I've talked about six feet, and I've heard other people talking six feet all the time, all over the place, that's a very, very important mitigation strategy. We also ask parents to self-monitor and see if students are sick every day before they go into school. Temperatures are taken with students prior to entering the building, and staff monitor themselves as well. And they stay home when they're sick. So all these strategies are currently being deployed as we clean, disinfect, and sanitize our buildings. The custodial staff have been outstanding in keeping our buildings clean. They keep our kids safe. They keep our staff safe. They're actually getting additional sprayers and disinfecting tools to be further cleaning our buildings even more. So all these strategies have become second nature to us, second nature to our students, and we're staying vigilant to keep our students and staff safe during this difficult time. So, that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
I have, I have a question. Face shields for the school buses, are these disposable ones, or are the students responsible for taking care of them, or is the bus driver responsible for cleaning them in between use?
That's a great question, Ms. Bowers. They're not as, we have the heavy-duty face shields that we're using now for speech and language therapy, some other kinds of therapies where, for if a student has a hearing impairment, where you have to see, you know, have to see their lips and mouths. These are a little more disposable, but they're not disposable. They can be cleaned and reused. And, and we, we purchased a significant amount, so there is plenty of face shields that, that can be needed.
Responsible for cleaning or reusing them, or is the bus driver responsible for taking them?
I want to pass that on to the superintendent.
So, the goal would be that we go ahead and issue them, but we have enough on hand. So for right now, on our buses, if a student right now gets on the bus or is at a bus stop, and they do not have a face covering, we have on hand extra face coverings for those students to put on. We would also have extra face shields there if that bus is in a situation to where there was more than one child per seat. But we would ask that those students try to keep up with them, but if they cannot, there would also be additional face shields that if they did not come on and they needed a mask and a shield, they would, they would be made available there. Then we also would have them at the schools upon request. So, you know, so there would be in a couple different locations. So when you look at this, you know, there's three elements in the new guidance. You have your layered mitigation, and that's what Mr. Hirsch is talking about, your universal masking, your physical distance, your hand hygiene, your cleaning and disinfecting, your contact tracing. So you, you keep layering those on top of each other to increase your effectiveness. Then your community spread. What is happening within the community and what is happening within the school? And then the last thing, you know, the face learning modes, you know, if, if it's high or you can't meet your mitigation strategies, then you go virtual. Or if it's lower, or your mitigation strategies help break it down or push it down lower, then you can go to more in-person. And so, all of that ties together in order to try to build what we can do within our own system that...
Any more questions?
In regards to the face mask on the bus. So if, if the bus pulls up and a student gets on the bus and he has to sit next to someone else in the same seat, does, is he the only one that wears the face mask, or does everybody have to wear the face mask? have to wear the face mask?
So, everybody on the bus is required to wear a face mask to even ride the bus.
Okay.
So, they can actually, and it's in our plan, that if you do not wear your face covering, then your bus-riding privileges can be removed.
Okay.
Because that is a mitigation strategy to keep everybody safe. But right now, we're planning on, and we think we can work it, to where there's one per seat, which would steal the face covering, you know, that helps with the distance and following additional guidance. So...
I wanted to get back to that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So, CDC has issued new guidance for the operation of schools. We know it is important, as Dr. Ballinger said, to, for our schools to be open and remain open, and to provide a supportive learning environment for our students. We have been working through the new guidance, which was released late last week, and want to highlight a few of the changes of the CDC's recommendations. There are four new levels of mitigation strategies. Under each of the levels is the guidance of mitigation. So if you look, there is now a low transmission, which is the blue, a moderate transmission, which is yellow, substantial, and then high. And I'll get to, at the end of this presentation, I'll get to where we are here in Warren County. But as you look, you know, the very first strategy is universal and correct use of masks is required. So that's under all four of the levels. Under the low, the next mitigation strategy, under the low and the moderate, is that schools, K-12 schools can open for full in-person instruction, physical distancing of six feet or more to the greatest extent possible. So that is under low and moderate. And then substantial, middle and high schools in hybrid learning mode, or reduced attendance, physical distancing of six feet or more is required. And then it becomes a little more restrictive as we move to the high. And then sports and extracurricular activities, again, you know, it's less strict at the low transmission level, and then more strict at the high transmission level. To determine the levels of mitigation strategies, the indicators are the total new cases for 100,000 in the last seven days, and the percent of NAAT. So, correct me if I'm wrong, it's nucleic acid amplification tests that are positive during the past seven days. This table shows the CDC recommended thresholds. So, oops. So, the blue, the lowest threshold is total new cases for 100,000 in the past seven days is zero to nine, and it goes all the way up to, you know, 100 at the high transmission level, greater than 100. Percentage of NAATS positive during the past seven days, less than 5%, 5 to 7.9%, 8% to 9.9, and then greater than 10%. So what does this, you know, where do we stand in this? So if you look, this is Warren County, and I grabbed this today. So if you look at the last few, this probably starts right around January, see the peak right here was sometime in January, but then you see a deep decline over the last, you know, several weeks. So, you know, today, I think this was February the 17th, there were 10 new cases. So, this is kind of where Warren County stands today. We're declining in the number of positive cases. So, one of the indicators was the number of positive cases over the last seven days. We're at 69. So I'm going to scroll back, so where does that put us? That puts us in the substantial transmission. But down towards the low part, we have a couple of high numbers there, at day six and day seven, that are getting ready to drop off. So, you know, as we continue that downward trend, we're going to get closer to this number of 49. And Dr. Ballinger and I, we're on a phone conversation with Dr. Green today, and we asked him if we would, you know, if he thought we would be able to be in this moderate transmission level by March the 15th, and he said, "The way the downward trend is looking, possibly, probably." So, wouldn't commit, but you know, at least gave us an idea that we definitely may be in this area as we move towards, hopefully, four days a week for our secondary students. So the other, the other indicator is the percent of RT-PRC tests positive during the last seven days, and we are at 5.4%. So if I scroll back and I look at that number right there, we are, we are well into the moderate transmission and close to the low transmission of that PRC test. So, you know, we are, we are definitely in that area. So, so for the total number of new cases, we are, we are just over the substantial transmission, and then we, for the other indicator, we are in the moderate transmission, yellow. So, what does that mean? So let's scroll back to the very first slide, and it means that if we are in the substantial, we just need to require six feet of distancing. But if we're in the moderate to low, then, you know, six feet of distancing to the greatest extent possible. And I know Mr. Fox is going to come up here and talk a little bit later about if we're able to maintain that six feet of distancing at our, at our secondary level. The, any questions about this before we move on? All right. The next person is Mr. Mitchell, and he's going to talk about transportation.
And again, all of these numbers, you know, where you look at your positivity rates and your percentages, if you layer those mitigation strategies on top of those, then that helps you to do more. So just, just keep that in mind. And of course, one of the things that we always have to, you know, that really, I always say, no pun intended, that drives our school system, and that is transportation. We have to get our kids, our students to school. And so, they have done a really good job this year. I've called on transportation a lot, time and time and time again, to run this, to run that. And they've always done a good job in looking at numbers, looking at individual students, looking at routes, and finding the best solution possible. And we kind of mentioned earlier that we thought we could stick to one student per seat. So now, let Mr. Mitchell talk about transportation and what he thinks we can possibly do with that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are we?
We're good, you?
I'm wonderful.
Good deal.
Now, Mr. Hirsch might have stolen my thunder, but he didn't have a really cool slide like Ms. Shepherd and I did. So, I just wanted to point that out, that maybe he's lacking. Really, what is in front of you here is a little difficult to see. If anybody wants, just let me know, and I'll email you a copy of this. But this is taking our current ridership data, and each one of these lines here where it says "bus," that's, that's a number, it's a bus number, and that's the seating capacity, what it's capable of seating wise. And what you'll see on the far right is the totals, and that's the number of students that we have assigned currently to, based on real data, actual students that are riding today. How many students would be on that particular bus? If you'll note, there's only two disconcerting numbers, and that's your 31 and your 36, and that means I've got 36 students on a bus that has 26 seats. So, and this we compiled four hours ago, five hours ago. So, we can massage that out, we can make sure that that doesn't happen, and that we can, at this point, given our current ridership, we should be able to maintain one student per seat with everybody going back four days. And yes, it's a miracle.
And so really, when you look at transportation, they've done a good job to make it where there's only three buses that we would be over. Our magic number is 26 students. And there's only really three buses that would be, and that's putting one student in every seat, that would be over that 26 number, that's over his magical number, to make it work. And so, if you notice that on the sheet, there are some buses where the ridership is only eight. You know, looking at, are there some buses that could be combined, or are there buses that could be done a different way, you know, to make it happen? Then, you know, that Aaron and his team will look at that to see how we can reduce those numbers. But to only have three buses that we were looking at that are over that magic number of 26, which puts us one per seat, if that's not a bad problem to have right now.
There are siblings that are on those buses that can be seated together.
And that is correct. When you look at those, and they have that last line there, so even on one of those buses, there's siblings, there's four siblings on there. So, you can stick two of them, they're seated. Yeah, so instead of them, that allows you to gain another number of, you know, there. So, so some of those, you know, could be taken care of just because of siblings, when you look at it. And so, we have to just, Aaron has to take all that and work through it to see how we can manage that to where, our goal is to put one per seat, but we also know that we're not, we're not going to turn a student down that's sitting on the side of the road and it's cold outside, and, you know, if that student's standing there, that bus driver's going to pick them up. You know, we're not going to leave them standing there on the side of the road. You know, so then we have to, then what do we do? We have to make sure we have our mitigation plan in place that, well, we, now we have two in this seat because there's an extra rider that day, so now we have to add on our layers of mitigation. So, but really, you know, and we have a process to work through that to ensure ridership. Not just having somebody call up and say, "They're riding today." There is a process that, one, they call the school, talk with the principal, the principal then communicates with Aaron. Aaron looks at the street, looks at the bus, looks at capacity on the bus, gets back with the principal. I mean, there's a lot of communication that goes back and forth before we actually say, "Okay, yes, that student can be transported." But to have only three buses that we're looking at, I think they did a good job in trying to make that happen.
I'd say, it's a lot of work. But I know you, you'll figure it out.
I think you're...
Yep. Absolutely.
So if we go to four days, what if there be more students decided they want to come?
So, we can tell you from experience at the elementary school, right now, you have those families that they're staying virtual no matter what. So if that number is 40%, we're still going to have 40% no matter how many days we are in session. What we would like to do to kind of address that for now, we would like to freeze, starting tonight, or today, to where nobody can move into in-person until after we come back. So if you're virtual, you're in this pod over here, if you're in-person, you're in this pod over here. We want to freeze it to where nobody can just start jumping in, because we still have the plan. And then, freeze it now, we start on the 15th, we run a couple of weeks, and then we start opening it back up to where if virtual students want to come back in, then we look at our numbers, we look at our situation, we try to find a solution on a case-by-case basis, not just opening the floodgates to let everybody come back in. We need, we need planning time, we need trial-run time, and then to open that up. Now, we would open it up if I am a new family moving in, we would give that option to a new family, say, "Do you want in-person or virtual?", and then make that, that adjustment. But currently, if you are a virtual student, you're virtual, you cannot move to in-person until after we come back from spring break, until you have to make a request. Like I said, there's a process, you have to make a request, and they only get one move. But we would allow, if you're in-person, to go to virtual. Because that number is, you know, we need to have consistency on our in-person right now, just where we're at the plan, to see what we can do. And then allow us to know if we need to open up additional rooms, or how that's going to affect transportation. So there's a lot of things that we would like to put in place to make sure that we kind of hold that number stable right now.
So essentially, the bottom line is, those students in middle school and the high school level that are currently attending, whether it's one day, two days, they will go to four days.
Yes, sir.
And those that are virtual will hold in place until we feel like we're able to accept...
Well, we think, we just want to make sure we have, our plan is good and solid. There's always going to be some kinks to work out.
Sure.
But if they are in-person, and they're coming there one day or two days, then they're automatically, they're four days a week if they, you know, starting on the 15th, if you guys approve that, of course. But, but you're right, those that are virtual, you know, our numbers have ticked up a little bit at elementary, and Ms. Rudessill could probably talk a little bit about numbers at elementary, but they're not to the extent that, you know, that we've had to go and open up a lot of different additional classrooms. You know, we've been able to handle it within the scope of what we set up September 8th. So there's been, and a lot of times, you may see three come to in-person, but you have four jump out to virtual. So, you know, it's, it's that balancing of how that works within that family dynamic, or what those students are wanting at that time. But we do only allow one time, one change. So, and we would kind of reset that. So if a student was, and we did that each semester, so if a student was in-person, but they just now went to virtual, we would allow them, if they wanted to come back to in-person after spring break. You know, we would, we would reset that, because we're changing the number of days. Now, also with this, we would give principals the flexibility during that dead time, that if we see our students are struggling, and that they recommend that that student be in, then they make that move to pull that student in that's really struggling, that's having a hard time virtually. We don't want to keep kids, we don't want students struggling and to continue struggling, but have them evaluate, look at them, and then allow them to pull those in if that is a decision that needs to be made educationally for that child.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
So we know that as we developed this plan, we set some things in play for, for the secondary schools. We went from a four-by-four to a six-period study. And I'm going to let Mr. Fox talk a little bit about the secondary and how that has played out, and because it was basically built for this reason. So, Mr. Fox?
During the planning for instruction this year, a great emphasis was placed on having elementary students attend as many days as possible. This emphasis limited the number of students that could ride a bus, and thus, attend middle and high school. The alternating schedule was created to give each student at middle and high school access to in-person instruction at least one day. As the schedule was being built, the administrative teams also considered the possibility of bringing secondary students back for more days in the spring. Classes were built so that if restrictions allowed, the classes could be combined. We find ourselves in exactly that situation. We have the ability to combine the two classes to create one in-person class that will meet four days a week. The current reality at our high schools is that our split in-person classes often only have three or four students in attendance. Combining classes will double this. For the few classes that will have a larger number of students, administrators are prepared to look for alternatives that will allow everyone to continue to maintain six feet of social distancing. These alternatives may include the use of other teachers, substitutes, or rooms that are currently empty. One of the bottom lines is that the availability of in-person classes and experiences can increase dramatically. The high schools are considering whether to keep the current structure of six classes in one day, or to have a schedule that has three classes on one day, and three classes the following day. So essentially, expanding the time in the class. The hope is that we will quickly acclimate to the larger classes and be prepared to increase class size as students become excited about the return to school. And that would be my greatest hope, is that we create a buzz and that we create a school year for all of our students. Speaking to Dr. Ballinger, if we return on March the 15th, that gives our students 61 students... sixty-one school days, a full third of a school year. And it certainly isn't what we wanted, but it, it, it would be a great gift, we believe. Our current, our middle schools are in a similar situation, although more students are currently attending. At Skyline Middle School, the mean average of students that are assigned as in-person students is twelve point seven. The actual number that are attending is a little bit less than that. The administration is prepared to look at room assignments and other strategies to keep social distances at six feet. Based on our current data, the majority of our classes are currently able to accommodate the combination of classes and the change to in-person instruction four days a week. Do you have any questions?
I have no question. We want to, are, are we going to try as best we can not to have hybrid classes? That's been the biggest concern for the teachers, is that they've got this, trying to get this cacophony of noise and work with these while sitting in a room with other students.
So, so there, so there will probably be some hybrid in some situations, but we really want to move more to an asynchronous type of virtual learning. Um, you know, in, in some classes, you know, you hear that there, the teachers are teaching through the, through the Chromebook and, and the students are logged into the Chromebook as well, so that everybody's on the Chromebook. Well, you know, if we look at, and Mr. Fox mentioned the three-by-three, uh, on a Monday and Tuesday, that's a ninety-minute section. So, so there's a lot of things that, that it could look differently where could that be a, a hybrid or, or situation, or is that focused more on my in-person for a short time, and then that gives me, um, some time also for my, my virtual students? So there's, you know, those are things that we have to look at and how we can make that happen. Elementary has been doing that for, for some time, and, and Mrs. Rudisil can, can talk to that with, with some of our students or teachers that have been hybrid with having a full class also teaching their students online. We don't want to create more work for our teachers, that's, that's not it, but, you know, one of my suggestions is that we kind of move more to an asynchronous and, and try to work from, from that angle to, to also increase our in-person, um, participation. Is there anything you want to add to that, Mr. Fox?
No, sir. Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Thank you. So, so the last piece of this, you know that when we, we were worried at the elementary that maybe some parents were relying on the older sibling to be at home when, when the younger sibling arrived on the bus, so that they, there would be some childcare. So, we have conducted some surveys. Um, Ms. Rudisil will talk about those surveys, and then we also had the survey with E. Wilson Morrison's families about making the move from a nine o'clock start to an eight o'clock start. So for your information, as far as, Ms. Rudisil will give you that information as far as looking at those two surveys and kind of the results for those.
All right, so I'm just going to give you all a, sort of a summary, and as Dr. Ballinger said, E. Wilson Morrison, we had already sent out a survey to those families to talk with them about how a schedule change would impact them. So we did not send the second survey right on the tail of that with, you know, these additional questions, but I think that, um, that you'll see from the summary of the results that sort of the same trends come out regardless of whether you're asking about the schedule change or about the secondary students' schedule change. So as far as the E. Wilson Morrison survey went, there were ninety-nine respondents as of today. Eighty-two of those ninety-nine had children who are currently attending in-person instruction. Forty-six of those families indicated that they would not have any problem with the schedule change, while thirty-four families did respond that it would create some challenges for them. So in total, twenty-two of the families at E. Wilson would require before and/or after school care. Within the next week, a school staff will be reaching out to families who either did not respond to the survey and to those families who responded to express that there would be some challenges, whether they be childcare or, or something else, to, um, work around some solutions for, for them. And I think the solutions that would come from this schedule change and what you heard Mrs. Lehman speak to you about when they did the survey of AS Rhodes families, the solutions are all going to come out very similarly, um, even with the survey from the other four elementary schools regarding not having their secondary children at home, would that create challenges for their families? So for the Warren County Public Schools Elementary Family Survey, which are the other four elementary schools, even, bless their hearts, some of the AS Rhodes families responded again to the survey. Though, as of today, we've had six hundred and eight respondents from the other four elementary schools. Thirty-five of those responses from LFK, thirty-five percent, thirty-two percent from Russi Jeffries, sixteen percent from Hilda, and then seventeen percent from AS Rhodes families. Ninety percent of the respondents indicated that the increase in in-person instruction for secondary students would not impact their childcare arrangements. Ten percent, which equals about sixty-three of our elementary families, did indicate that it would impact their family's childcare needs. Out of the fifty-four comments that families made, thirty-one of those comments indicated that childcare assistance would be needed in response to their middle or high school children not being home to care for their elementary children. So, moving forward, the elementary school staff will continue to reach out to parents who either did not respond or families who expressed that they would have some challenges to face. Each elementary school will use existing staff to provide before and after-school care for families where possible, uh, and Ms. Lehman went through that in quite a bit of detail when she presented to you all several weeks ago. And the same situation would exist at our other elementary schools, using primarily instructional assistance and then giving, exchanging that time for the time that they would be working on Wednesdays when, when we're all virtual. Warren County School Age Childcare, Ms. Shepherd has also communicated with them, and they do have openings in both their before and after-school care programs. That is a childcare service that families pay for, um, but that is also an option for some of our families, especially those families who may be looking for childcare from six in the morning until six in the evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions that I can.
Just thank the staff for following up with the parents, because that's a lot of work.
It is a, it is a lot of work, and they have really gone, um, teachers, principals, assistants, they've gone above and beyond, um, to reach out to families. And I would definitely encourage families, or if you speak with families who have not had an opportunity to respond to the survey, to reach out directly to their child's teachers or their child's principal. And, um, you know, they are all more than willing to put whatever they can in place to help our families.
So we know that this was a big decision as far as, and there's a lot of moving parts in moving to four days a week, and we wanted to be sure to cover all of those sections of what it would take to get us to four days a week at the secondary level. So, in moving forward, we know we have the new guidance, we have mitigation and additional mitigation strategies in place. You know, Mr. Hurst actually mentioned the sanitizing sprayers. We were actually looking at purchasing at the high school and middle school, one per department. At the elementary, one per grade level for each building, so that there's additional sprayers, um, you know, that, that's made available. So, so there are a lot of things that we're looking at to increase our availability. We know rates are falling. You know, and, and as Mrs. Shepherd mentioned, you know, Dr. Green was in our conversation today, thought that we would be in a pretty good place in March fifteenth. Um, you know, we have one orange and we have one yellow. Um, you know, again, when it comes down to schools, I'm going to read you a couple of things here and then I'll, I'll, I'll finish. Um, K-12 schools should be the last setting to close after all mitigation measures in the community has been employed, and the first to reopen when they can do so safely. It's critical for schools to open and stay open and to increase and achieve benefits of in-person learning for our students. Any level of community transmission, there are options for in-person instruction, either full or hybrid, for all schools by strictly using mitigation strategies. Decisions should be guided by information on school-specific factors such as mitigation strategies implemented, local needs, stakeholder input, the number of cases among students, teachers, and staffs, and school experience with safely reopening. A decision to remain open should involve considerations for further strengthening mitigation strategies and continuing to monitor case, incident, and test positivity to reassess decisions. And so those, those were from the CDC back in February. So, you know, we have a good process in place. We, we have been successful. We've been able to do a lot of things. So, my recommendation to the board is that, you know, I would recommend that we move towards the March fifteenth with the, the caveat that we freeze secondary students where they are now. So that schools are able to plan, and then they have two weeks of running, and then we open that back up. That it, Dr. Ballinger?
That is it, sir.
That's it? Thank you very much. Uh, questions for Dr. Ballinger?
I mean, what's, what's the pleasure? Yeah, I think we need to move forward. I think the plan is in place. I think the numbers are falling, so.
Of course, each week we'll be able to assess that a little bit better.
Exactly.
Just step back.
And we're talking about middle, fifth, or March.
We're talking about four weeks.
Yeah. So there's still time to readjust, but it sounds like the plan is, is solid right now. You know, I believe it's the right thing to do.
I appreciate the, uh, the presentation that was made by all speakers tonight, because it was very informative and, uh, answered a lot of my questions that I had about this. So, uh, thank your staff for what you've done and what you've been doing the whole time. Uh, Dr. Ballinger, you got a, a great crew here, don't you? So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Motion.
I move that we move forward to the planned March fifteenth reopening of the schools at the secondary level, keeping in mind that we may need to make some changes as the weeks progress.
I'll second that.
With, with freezing, with freezing the secondary schedule as it is now.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Ballinger. Next item is approval of a one-time bonus for full-time and part-time employees at Warren County Public Schools. Dr. Ballinger? When the FY21 Warren County Public Schools operating budget was approved on May sixth, twenty twenty, salary increases for all employees except teachers were placed on hold due to the uncertainties with the evolving pandemic. It was stated that as the year progressed, conditions would be reassessed to determine if salary adjustments could be made mid-year. Two of the ma- two of the major concerns regarding the impact of the pandemic on the budget were its impact on students, student membership, and sales tax collection, both drivers in determining state revenue. Through December, the state, state sales tax collections have met targeted revenue projections, and all three current budget bills include holding school divisions harmless for student enrollment loss suffered due to the pandemic. Because it is so late in the year, a salary increase would have minimal effect for employees while also creating an ongoing cost that the yet-to-be-approved FY22 budget may not be able to sustain. For these reasons, it is recommended that a one-time bonus be given to all full-time and part-time employees. The bonuses would be paid on Friday, March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, the last day of the work, uh, last day of work before spring break. Full-time employees would receive a net, that is take-home payment of one thousand dollars, and part-time employees a net payment of five hundred. The total estimated cost of these payments is one million, two hundred thirteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. For employees hired after September thirtieth, twenty twenty, the payment would be pro-rated as follows based on their hire date. October first through October thirty-first would receive seventy-five percent. November first through November thirtieth, sixty-seven percent. December first through December thirty-first, fifty percent, and if they were hired after January one, twenty-five percent. Comments?
I would, I would say that our staff in the whole county has turned on a dime all year, literally day-over, sometimes hour-over. I feel that this is the least we can do to help them out, and a pay raise this late in the year would be null and void, I mean, be very minimal. So, I think, I think we have the ability to do it, we should do it.
I agree.
I agree, Mr. Chairman.
You have a motion?
I agree.
Yes.
So I agree. Give me the longest one. I believe that approval be given for a one-time bonus payment to full-time and part-time employees on March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. Full-time employees are to receive a net payment of one thousand and part-time employees a net payment of five hundred dollars. Employees hired in October twenty twenty are to receive seventy-five percent of the approved amount. Employees hired in November twenty twenty are to receive sixty-seven percent of the approved amount. Employees hired in December twenty twenty are to receive fifty percent of the approved amount. And employees hired from January first, twenty twenty-one to March third, twenty twenty-one are to receive twenty-five percent of the approved amount. New employees with the start date after March third, twenty twenty-one, as well as current employees with the separation date prior to March third, twenty twenty-one, are not eligible for this payment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Next item is superintendent's proposed budget. Dr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just want to go over the proposed budget for this year. We, again, it's a joy working with the, the team that I work with on a daily basis. They, they do a great job, and, and as we, we worked through this, we, we knew that there were priorities that we needed to address, and, and kind of as was just mentioned in the last action item, that, you know, salaries, all except for teachers, were put on hold last year. So our main focus this year is correcting salary scales and steps for all employees except administrators. We're not going to, we didn't adjust, there's certain, well, there's certain salary skills we did not adjust. We were only going to focus on steps, which would be getting them to a step that is corresponding to their years of service. There are other salary skills that we, we adjusted salary skills because in some scales that, at the back of the book, you can look at them, they're, they're within the document, that some employees may be on the same scale or the same pay for step one, two, three, four, and five, so they would not receive a, a bump in, in pay or pay raise until year six. So, so those salary scales were fixed and plus years of experience aligned with steps. So, so there was a lot going into that. We really wanted to focus on, on the employees. Because, yes, we, we have, we have good facilities. We have a lot better facilities than a lot of divisions across, across the country or across the, across the Commonwealth and, but, they're empty shelves without the people inside them. The people bring life. And so, we need to take care of the people that are in those buildings working and the people that come into those buildings to receive an education.
people that come into those buildings to receive an education. And so that is our first focus, to make sure that we, we take care of our, our individuals. So as we go through this, you know, we have our mission, our vision statement, and we are currently working on those, to update those. But the, the mission and vision statement that we have right now are the current ones. Our student achievement, state accountability, again, two schools that are accredited with conditions, but those are old accreditation statutes. They will continue to be accredited with conditions next year because everything's in a holding pattern. So we may not see the fruits of their labor until another year if we can get a full year in. When we look at our budget priorities, I've kind of already mentioned that, personnel, we wanted to look at our, adjust salary scales, reflect years of experience for the following positions. That's instructional assistants, administrative assistants, head secretary, secretary, uh, but a specialist, teach, nurse, and social workers. We wanted to look at fixing the steps for our bus drivers and then administrator one, administrator two, and administrator, or sorry, administrator three and administrator five. So we, we wanted to look at that. Now, we also have insurance benefits in here. That's one of those things that, that we will, we have to, to look at. You know, we just made the transition 17 days ago. So Buck and his department's been working on getting the transition done. Now they'll start looking at how we can adjust with possible revenue savings from moving from, to Etna this year and for next year. So we also looked at our facilities and then some other things. The one thing that you won't find in our budget is, again, the buses. And so the buses are something that we want to try to tackle that a different way. And so we'll look at that and see how that works out. But when we look at our budget, you know that it's, it's a document that, that guides us, that tells us, you know, puts our limits on us, on what we can do. We have our, our four main sources of funding when it comes to our budget. We have our state, our local, our federal, and then miscellaneous or other that come in from, from other activities or other, other things that we do as far as within the school system and are able to bring in revenue through that. This budget is built on 4,964 students. That is the, the, that is the number that was proposed from the State Department of Education. Last year's budget was on 52...
12?
Yeah.
5202?
02.
02.
5202. And so that's a 208 student reduction as far as what we were facing this year. So we know that our student count is down. Now, we have started trickling up a little bit. I think this last report was at 5,002 students. So when you look at the, the budget, and I'm going to dive on into the revenue, you know, there are, right now, all three legislative bodies have said, we want to hold schools harmless. But if your numbers tick up to where they're supposed to be, so right now we budgeted for 49, 4964, but if we kick up to 5202, they're going to fund us on that 5202, but they're going to pull some of these hold harmless funds from us. But if we stay where we're at, they're going to, you know, right now, that's kind of what we're looking at. So when you look at revenue and by source, in FY21, we received $23,955,332 from, from the state. We're projected to receive $25,208,10. That's an increase of $1,252,678. Local, looking at revenue from FY21 of $26,956,323. We're going to request an increase of $1,797,236 right now. That would move us to $28,753,559 as far as our, the local contribution. Federal is up $275,000 from 2.383 to 2.658. Sales tax, again, sales tax, we, we met projections this year that we didn't think we would meet. It seems like everybody is kind of meeting projections even at the state level. And so we would see an $83,000 increase in, in next year's projections from 6.7 million to 6.8 million in sales tax. And then our other revenue, we, we would look at a reduction of 109,000 in our other revenue. So a total, when you look at total revenue bringing in, this proposal would be $64,110,418, which is $3,299,741 above what we received the previous year. So again, kind of as I, you have the, the graph there that, that shows 45% comes from Warren County, uh, board of supervisors or from our community that grants that through the board of supervisors, 50% from the state, 4% from federal, and 1% miscellaneous. So when we look at our expenditures, and this is kind of where our focus has been, you know, our budget this year, we look at instruction, we would see an increase in instruction, and that's based on a, right now, a proposed 2% salary scale plus a step for teachers. We would also update and adjust steps for instructional assistants, school administrative assistants, head secretary, secretary, therapist, and speech positions. Administrator skills would not be adjusted, but we would like to move them according to their step that's consistent with their years of experience. And of course, just by doing that, that is a cost of 2.557 million when you look at the cost just for the instruction side of it. But we also feel that we have the need for an English language learner teacher, gifted and talented teachers, two criminal justice teacher half-time, because that's, that would be a new program at Blue Ridge Tech, one history teacher. We currently have a teacher that is split part-time between Skyline High School and at Warren County High School. Adding a full-time would basically give us a full-time there at each instead of having that person be half-time at each. Special education assistance and assigned language interpreter. So when you, you ask, what, what do we need an English language learner teacher for? Well, we, we need to make sure that our students are receiving the number of minutes that is, that they're supposed to receive by the Department of Justice or through those guidelines. So adding that teacher will help us to, to ensure that we're meeting the students' needs according to that. The two gifted and talented teachers, we, it's important that we have an established program at our elementary schools. Right now, elementary schools are kind of, they're, they're doing some programming on their own, but we, we really need to establish a program for those elementary students. Again, I just mentioned about the half-time criminal justice teacher and the history teacher. The special education assistant will help to support the growing needs of our special education population. And then the sign language interpreter is needed to support current students that we have within our division and students that are coming into the division. So there are some positions that we would also help to cover this cost, to reduce the burden. Each year, we look to either fill, reallocate, reassign, or absorb positions. So there are three, there are a few positions that we would like to, to reallocate to help in covering some of these additional costs. And that's our social emotional coach of a cost of $70,000, our gifted and talented coordinator at 104 cost to the division, and then a remediation teacher of $62,250 total cost, which would be a total reallocation of $236,250. When you look at the administrator side, again, we're, we're still looking at updating administrative assistants, secretary, nurse, level-one specialist, so that they can be competitive regionally. And that is a cost of $300,182 to, you know, the, the, some of the skills that we did not adjust, the social worker, the psychologist, the administrator skill, and just get our employees on the proper step, that would be a cost of 128,418. Transportation, looking there, again, it's, it's heavy with, with just making sure that we, we correct our scales and get on steps. And again, you're looking at 157,803. Two additional activity drivers we would like to add, that would be no cost to the division or to the county, so that's budget neutral, and we would obtain that by restructuring and reallocating some vacant positions within the transportation department. Operations and maintenance, again, there, here we have, we're, again, focusing on our employees that, that get the job done, but also within this, we, we are requesting $100,000 to increase in operations maintenance, to move us from a 60% of unscheduled maintenance to a 60%, preventative maintenance schedule. So we really need to start scheduling those instead of going around and putting out fires, you know, let's keep the fire from happening. But then you look at, yeah, $91,790 would be the cost to update salary scales and steps for administrative assistant, maintenance journeyman, maintenance, maintenance form of positions, and administration within the maintenance department. We also would have an increase of $30,776, and that is due to the 1.5% increase with Sedexo, so that needs to be built into our budget to help in, in securing custodial staff to, to, which have, they've been integral to us being able to stay open this year, and they've done a great job. Technology, again, the, the main cost here is, again, our updating the steps for system technicians and then just administration on the, the proper step. Now, we actually used, we moved from 3 gig to 10 gig, and we use Google Suite as our foundation, and so those are yearly costs. And after E-Rate pays, our portion would be $27,000. So just making sure that that, that is there because that will be something going forward that we're going to need. Our contingency fund, we took that down from $490,000 to $150,000. So we wanted to throw that other $440,000 into the budget to help cover salaries for our, for our employees. And so that gives us a total expenditure of $64,110,418. Again, talent's there. We, we talk about that we're looking at our insurance. We're going to try to develop a good plan and to make sure we have something that we can, we can be proud of for years to come and, and something that we can sustain. So we're going to work on that over the next few months. So when you look at our expenditures or, you know, our approved budget from 2021, I'm on page 24 right now, versus our proposed budget, again, you see that, that increase is $3,299,741 over the previous year. Now, we have not, the only budget that we received is the governor's budget. The other budgets are still in play. Also, what we know is from the House side, they are, they are saying, let's do a 5% for SOQ positions. The Senate side is saying a 3%. So there's still some, some of this process that we have to go through. But right now, this, this is our initial ask for what we want to achieve for, for our employees of Warren County Public Schools. The, the next section that we added are capital improvements. There, the dollar sign that you see there, the $3,085,000 that is federal funds, those federal funds are from the Coronavirus Response Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, and we want to put those towards LFK and renovation towards their, or updating of their HVAC. Now, of course, the cost for that is $6 million, so that only covers half of it. But those are federal dollars, that's a one-time expense. We have to spend those by 2023. And that is an expense that they can be spent on. Because, you know, with federal dollars, they typically will limit you to what you can do. But this will help to increase the outside airflow to help with mitigation strategies within that building. And then we listed our, our needs as far as within our capital improvement plan from highest priority to just projects, to future projects. And so if you look at the dollar, the dollar amount for our highest priority is 9.7. But some of those things could be taken care of depending upon what we do going forward and how things work out. So right now, we know two of our biggest things, or three of our biggest things that we need to tackle are the roof at LFK, the roof at Blue Ridge Tech, and the roof at Skyline High School. Because if those roofs fail, you're going to have more damage than just the roof itself. So we really need to focus on those three roofs right now to make sure that we protect everything else inside that building. But then you see all the other ones that are listed there that we also have, have identified as priorities with, across the division. The next section of, of the book, and I'm not going to go through them at all, but those are proposed salary scales. And when you look at those, it compares the current salary scale to the proposed salary scale. So that's, that's what the, the two columns are for.
Thank you, Dr. Ballinger.
Board, I know we spent a long time yesterday evening covering this from front to back. I don't feel there's any fluff in it. I feel that's, you know, it's got all the numbers and they're all needs. It's not a one, one in there. We've got, we've got the bricks and mortar. I know our retention rate has, has gone up since we did the pay adjustment last year. We're tracking a lot of people who come to Warren County as teachers, and we need to continue that, I believe. Great facilities and great teachers. It's nothing but a win for our students. So that's all I have. Any other comments, questions?
Good motion. Yes.
I would move that the Warren County School Board adopt the fiscal year 2022 budget of $64,110,418.
That would be the superintendent's proposal.
As proposed by the superintendent.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Ballinger, could you do a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Dr. Pence?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bauer?
Yes.
Mr. Rinaldi?
Yes.
Motion carries. Saying no other business for this board, meeting adjourned. Have a good evening. Thank you all.